Change.
It's nine o'clock. Save that, we'll look forward to that. All right, so it's nine o'clock, we'll call the. Meeting of the County Board of Commissioners to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance Commissioner Van Dusen, I believe it's your turn.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republican Party, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, without any injustice.
Number two, call for public comments, so public comment can be submitted in person or by telephone at the following two telephone numbers, six oh five eight eight two. Six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. If you have a cell phone, please silence it if you need to take a call, please step out of the room. Number three, are there any conflict of interest items on the agenda for any commissioners?
No.
None for me? Okay, number four, I might entertain. A motion to approve our agenda for today.
So moved.
Motion by Van Dusen.
I'll second it.
Second by Schwer. Any additions or correction or any changes? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
What's you know? That motion carries, number five, action to approve April eighteenth minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Waterman. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
What's you know? Okay, the motion carries. Number five, I'm sorry, number six, we got monthly reports first up is Andrew from our. Emergency Management.
All right, Andrew.
After last month's meeting, the Sheriff's Office said that spring would never come, but we planned as if it was going to, so. Uh, we did uh, do a couple of weather spotter trainings, uh. Forty-seven people in total, um, over two different courses, uh, attended and. Like went through the Skywarn. Weather Spotter Training that, uh, the National Weather Service does. Um. It was severe weather preparedness week last week, uh, for South Dakota and Minnesota, but like. Like with some of the flood stuff, I mean. Wasn't necessarily on our radar as much. Um. So we're going to resume, uh. Weather siren, the outdoor warning siren testing for Watertown this week. Um, for this first one, we're going to set off, uh, the outdoor warning sirens countywide. Uh, so we've called each of the towns and. Coordinated to, to try to have somebody watching every one of those at noon on Friday. So a lot of time was, uh, dedicated to flood response, uh. Fortunately now, like most of the river gauges are, are coming down out of. Uh, some of those flood stages, uh. Big souvenir Florence that. Set a, I mean, it's tentative right now, but a new record high, uh, up there, and that's just into. Uh, Grant County, um. But then. I mean. I don't know, what is it? Think now. Like Broadway gauge is still, um, in minor flood stage, um, it came down from moderate yesterday, I think at seven AM. Or just around there, um, some of the other gauges are still like. In minor stage, um, closer to Watertown, but. I mean, overall, things are appearing to trend in the right direction there, um.
Pelican, Pelican was down point seven two inches this morning, so that's good news.
Pelican's coming down, I did see that they're still in.
How much did it come down?
Point seven two.
Oh.
So they're still in the minor flood stage.
Yeah. Um, so I mean, resource requests, I mean. Got nine hundred sixty foot of HESCOs, uh, from the states, um, that they were able to. To send our way to, to help us with, uh, with our flood fight. Um. Sandbags require pallets, so. Lot of, you know, time gathering. Lot of time gathering pallets and so forth, uh, Hubbard Feed and DSG, um, were the two companies that we got most of them from, so just kind of wanted to say thanks. Um. I mean, kind of leading up to. Like the. The major week, I guess, where we spent most of our time, uh, with that, um, I was sending daily updates, um, from the National Weather Service, just kind of what, um. What was happening, you know, with, with each of the gauges. Um. But yeah. A lot of, lot of damage in township on township roads, uh, like from that, um, we sent out, uh. PDA's, uh, preliminary damage assessments, so we're, we got one back from one of the townships and, I mean, expecting more, I mean, we called. All of the townships and talked to them, most of them said that they had some damage from, from that rapid snow melt. Um. For good news, I mean, we received the final adoption letters from the PDM, um, and that got sent off and got the final approval. Um, so that's going to open the door for, for future funding opportunities, uh, mainly from the brick grant. Uh, the building resilient infrastructure and communities. Grant. And then in the coming month, I signed up for. An APS class, that's an advanced professional series class called Rapid Needs Assessment, and then EM one oh three, um. That's the last class that I needed, uh, within twenty-four how, within twenty-four months of hire for the. Um. The Emergency Management Performance Grant. Um, and then we're also hosting the, the state IMAT team, um, they're doing an exercise in our EOC. I think it's going to be a, a good exercise, so the. The IMAT team is the Incident Management Assistance Team, uh, they. They will come and augment in EOC staff, uh, to, to try to help them out, um. They specifically asked that, like, we not necessarily bring, like, all of the super experienced people that have been in there a lot, so they're, they're kind of hoping. Or the thinking that. By going with, you know, some possibly up and coming people, people that would be in those roles in the future, it's going to exercise their team more, and it's going to give some professional development to those guys, so. I think it'll be mutually beneficial.
So the thing they're exercising is, um. At those, those kind of moments, those kind of situations where they would need to send in somebody to augment a, a local EOC.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
I guess, pending your questions, uh, that's all I had.
Just how, any, any sense of the, kind of the amount of damage that we're gonna hear for the county?
Um.
It's okay if you don't have, just, just curious.
I guess I'd. I don't know, I don't, I don't want to.
Okay.
Ballpark it just, yeah, so.
Pretty right.
All right, any other questions from Andrew? I think we have an item on the agenda, we might want to go and take care of number seven, and on the agenda you had some, uh. So it's action to declare miscellaneous emergency management office property surplus to be destroyed.
I mean, we've got. Uh, some broken equipments, um, that was on there, um, that. I mean. The typewriter, I mean, is. I don't know, like. Do we really need to keep a typewriter around?
What says it's broken?
Um, the copy machine, yeah, I mean, we tried to print or, uh, copy stuff on that and it just came out black. I think, uh. Like the manual on there, like had a date of nineteen ninety-seven on there. That flashlight doesn't work, um. The TV screen doesn't work.
I'll move to approve that, uh, we, there are these items. Uh. For. Uh, disposable.
Second, so motion. So motion by Johnson, second by Van Dusen, any other questions or discussion for Andrew? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
What's you know, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Andrew, thank you.
Next up is. Report is from the sheriff.
Morning.
Morning Brad.
How's it going today?
Good.
Wonderful.
All right. Grab one and pass them down. We'll get started with our commissary monthly balance sheet there, that's the first page you guys see on your. Page there. For that bank account, bank balance end of March of twenty-three, twenty-four thousand three hundred twenty-two dollars and eighty-six cents. Um, and lobby ATM booking kiosk at the time, there was five hundred sixty-nine dollars, were grand total of twenty-four thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars and eighty-six cents. Look at the resident balances, at the time, there was fifteen oh nine sixty. Commissary items. Um. Those stacks not distributed there, four thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars and forty-six cents. Funds balance with eighteen thousand five forty-five eighty, or grand total of twenty-four thousand eight ninety-one eighty-six. Leaves our total original starting balance at fifteen thousand, and if you look at the bottom there, you'll see that sold five thousand four hundred forty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. And we got thirty percent commission on that for one thousand six hundred thirty-four dollars, which was remitted to the. General fund.
Better look at that number again, it said one fucking sixteen thousand.
Uh, the bottom one there, one thousand six hundred thirty-four dollars, yeah, that is the.
All right.
Amount committed, so. Look at the next page there, the sheriff's monthly balance sheet for the checking account there, uh, the bank balance end of March twenty-three, seven thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars and sixteen cents. You look down, we received thirty-seven dollars in copy fees. Five thousand seven hundred and four dollars and sixty-six cents in sheriff's fees. And six hundred and fifty dollars in warrant fees for a grand total of six thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-six cents. Which leaves our bank balance back at eight eighty-nine fifty, our starting balance, so. These got our numbers kind of pulled up on the big screen there, you'll see, uh, start with some of the Sheriff's Office activity for the month of. March here. Uh, it's five hundred and nine cases and calls for service in the month of March, there was ten accident reports that were completed, eighty-nine warrants were served. Two hundred eighty-seven trans, or two hundred eighty-seven civil papers were served and four thousand and twenty-one transport miles. Completed, that was a total of twenty-nine people that were transported and seventeen trips, just kind of break that down a little bit. If you scroll down to the middle of the page there, you'll see month of March for the jail. Population, our average daily population is fifty-seven point oh three, our high ADP was sixty-five, that was on the fifth of March. Our low ADP was forty-eight, that was on the twenty-seventh of March. Um. Twenty-four seven program we had on the scram bracelet, twenty-five people, five people in the remote breath. Thirty-five people on the twice daily PBTs. And fifty-two people on the twice weekly UAs and one person on the sweat patch. Were grand total of one hundred and eighteen people in twenty-four seven program. And we had two hundred and thirty-five bookings for the month of March, so you can see those are a little bit higher than the. Previous months there, but it's kind of getting back into where it kind of used to be, it seems like, so. We scroll down to the bottom a little bit more. We collected eleven thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-six cents at out of county contracts for the month of March. Three thousand six hundred dollars from the work release collected. Twenty-four seven fees collected, five thousand four hundred and twenty dollars in scram fees that were collected. Uh, five thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Questions on those? I did bring up some numbers here of the, uh. Court Security Booth down there, like to share those every few months, just kind of show the number of people that are coming through. The, the courthouse here on a. Just an average month here, so for the month of March. Uh, there was a total of twenty-three days that were business days for the month there, and there was a total number of people of seven thousand three hundred and ninety-eight people. That's about average of three hundred and twenty-one people a day that were coming through the booth, and now let's say March is not a, not a tax month or anything like that, it's just a regular month, so. Now, no voting, seven thousand three hundred and ninety-eight for the month. Averages out to be about three hundred and twenty-one people. So. Thirty-seven bladed weapons were found and turned away, um, nine mace and pepper spray were turned around and total. Number of other potential weapons were about sixteen that were turned and found and turned away, so. Dave is definitely busy down there, so make sure you thank him when you're coming and going through the court house. So. I have one other topic here, I might even bring Matt up here, let's see, he's, uh. Give me a hand at this one here, I'm not able to make it next week, but we've been having an issue with some. Um. Porcelain sinks, and I know I reported on that several months ago, we had an issue with an inmate that broke a porcelain toilet, and then when you break a porcelain toilet, you. Basically have an.
Any weapon.
A weapon, um, this year's an instance that has happened. Here this week, within last week, one of our porcelain sinks have been busted off, so. We've been getting some quotes and some numbers to see if we can get those fixed, right now we have seven toilets. And nine sinks that need to be updated. For twenty twenty-three, we had budgeted sixty-four thousand, I think, something like that, for, to start sixty-six thousand to start replacing. Some showers, because we've been having issues with showers and, uh, plumbing issues, and they're getting to. End of their life as well, so instead of doing showers this year, we're going to propose to do. Replace these, uh. Porcelain sinks and, uh, toilets, so we do have a quote here, we can pass it around, but I know it's not on the agenda for today, but I just wanted to share you with you kind of what's happening. It's a safety issue, and so instead of doing the showers, we're looking to do the sinks and, uh, the toilets, so if you got questions, now's the time. What's going to be on the agenda for next week, just for, to try to get this expedited and get it up and going, uh, we're looking at around forty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, by the time you get everything shipped here with new stainless steel sinks and toilets and have them mounted and installed. For those seven toilets and nine lavatories, so.
How long have those porcelain sinks and toilets been in the jail?
I'm guessing since they.
I mean, holy smoke.
Although the. Yep, but there's some there and there's some in the, uh, dorms, which are from the seventies and some that are from ninety-eight when they did that addition, so. So these are all.
Right, and that new addition.
And the new addition, yeah. So, so you would, you would use it when we have showers here. Yes, yeah, so instead of doing showers this year, something will have to push back to another year.
So why did you have a budgeted for showers?
Budgeted for showers replacing, was it four or five? Uh, this year or something, it was not all of them, but we figured we'd kind of get a roll, kind of start doing some of them, but we'll just push that back another year and maybe do more next year or something.
But it wasn't forty-nine thousand.
Uh, sixty-six.
Higher.
Yeah. Yeah, for. Four or five showers?
There was, uh, five toilets and three showers.
Okay, yeah, toilets, we also need to. The existing toilets in the facility, the, uh, stainless steel ones that we do have are starting to have issues, we had to replace one, uh, it was the end of last year. That was around five thousand dollars, if I remember right, for the toilet, by the time you buy them, and, um, this equipment isn't cheap, it's. Uh, it may prove.
Military.
Military, yes, so.
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 What's the issue with the showers?
Showers are having issues with, uh, the plumbing, the plumbing is eroding away inside, so like the. All the plumbing in the shower and then they have to cut panels in, they were installed without a access panel to be able to get in and fix them. So you cut the side of the shower open and. So the new shower hopefully would have some sort of an access panel where we can replace all the.
So it's kind of like a, like a, like a whole unit kind of thing, so.
Yeah, it's a whole special stainless.
Access panel, so when we looked at some of the jails, uh, uh, different counties, access panels are a big deal.
Yeah.
Sure they are, yeah.
So.
Oh.
Yeah, those are some of the issues that we've been having that we're.
Okay.
That we're working on, so.
Thanks for the heads up.
I think Steve, he's still in here, he. They will, yeah, we're going to answer some questions, we're keeping Steve abreast of what's happening here too, so. He'll be up here, hopefully next Tuesday, if you have any more questions, we can hopefully get them answered, so we can get the process started, so.
Does this happen frequently, uh? With either chipping stuff off or breaking stuff off?
Frequently, but it, but if that breaks, then you have a knife, and then what?
I know, it's, it's a safety factor, absolutely. And some guy did.
Yeah.
Some, some intelligent person just. Cause spending a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah. And of course, and it has to be a safety factor for you guys.
Yeah.
And the other inmates.
Yeah. Yeah, we do find occasionally homemade weapons or something like that back there in the jail. Uh, we do charge them out accordingly and deal with that, but, uh, those are things we're trying to be proactive about for everyone's safety.
Oh, yeah, have to be, yeah.
All right, any, any, many questions?
Are you going to be looking for approval next week to make that purchase?
Now. I sent it to Brad, so she'll have a, a copy of everything which is got here, so, um, you guys will have that, and that's hopefully to get approval next Tuesday, so we can. Get, get them ordered, because we know how supply lines are, there's still waiting stuff from last year for cameras and stuff, so, um. So it's something that's not a common thing, even with an urgent bias, so.
Is that, um, sell then out of service until that's fixed, or is it, what's the status of that?
It's, it's got it back together with a difference, with a sink or whatever, so it's still, it's back together now.
And then are, uh, damages being assessed to the inmate?
So she actually ripped it off and, and she took it and set it down and didn't break it this time, but. Because if she did, what would we do, you know?
Yeah.
So, um, yeah.
So is that something that we can go after the inmate for restitution for, for damages, okay?
Okay, so any other, um, um. Brad's report, you any, any questions? We just got a couple of agenda items here, eight, nine, so, uh, number eight is to approve the purchase of a Sure Guard Safety Restraint Chair. For the detention center.
Well, um, you'll, you should see in your, in your box there, three thousand seventy-five dollars for a. Safety restraint chair, we have one right now, it's getting older, we replaced some parts on it, and, um. Basically, we're in time for two of them, we, we need two of them, um, one we keep in the. Sally Court for when inmates brought in that are unruly, and then would use the other one as a backup inside the jail. When we're talking about a safety restraint chair, it's a chair that. We can safely subdue an inmate. And keep everyone safe. It's a budgeted item, we plan for it this year. Got up a little bit from when we bought the last one.
Make a motion to go ahead and move forward with the purchase.
Motion from Van Dusen, is there a second? I'll second the second from Schwer. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, please say aye, if you're favor.
Aye.
You're supposed to say no? Oh, uh, motion carries. And then you have the next, uh, number nine on these. Which is action to declare miscellaneous sheriff's property surplus to be destroyed.
You have a copy right here.
I think it's on the screen, I guess, and stuff.
Yeah, computers. Yeah, old computers that we replaced over the years and need to get surplus to be destroyed.
I'm going to approve the list that they have in front of us, that is declared surplus.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Waterman. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I will say no, that motion carries. All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good morning.
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 Well, I'm happy to say that we currently do not have any roads underwater or water running over them. At one point, we had ten to fifteen roads where there was water standing on the road or running over that we had to close. When the flood was going on. We'd have to set up barricades, there was a couple evenings that the guys got called in. Come out, put barricades up, things like that, to close things off. We'd get them opened up as soon as we could. We still have. Gravelled a hall on a lot of the spots on the gravel roads. We're not doing it right now because the roads are so soft, I don't want to tear up more than what we can fix. Because the gravel roads, even the asphalt roads are extremely soft right now. There's water sitting under there, the frost hasn't left. Uh, Troy was on one of our roads the other day and. That's. Connected to gravel pits and they're hauling out of there.
Hmm.
And, uh. We're trying to keep it glued back together. And it's just. We need some heat, that's, that's all I could say, is we need some heat to get things cooked out of there, because that's. It's just like farming, the fields are so wet, they can't get in it, the roads are left in the same shape, so. Uh. The spots that the water run over, most of them have a barricade on each end of it. So there's a warning, because they're, they're smoothed out, but they're, want people to slow down before they get to them. Because some of them, there's, there's a slight drop, it's not a drop off or anything, but it, we've got them all. Shaped up with a blade so they can drive through it. But, uh, just. Have people slow down. Lynn and I are trying to figure out how many ton of gravel got washed off roads, we didn't have any roads get washed out. The worst one was probably up on two, right on the east end of the bridge. There was probably a foot of material taken out of that, but it didn't wash, wash it out completely, so we'll be able to fill that back up. And some of the gravel that got washed off, we have a back hole. Pulling the gravel back up on the road, because yesterday I was up there and he had a couple pretty good sized piles and. That way it helped smooth things up. We'll be working with Andrew on some of the stuff for FEMA, if there is a disaster. Money to be taken from, from FEMA, so. Our part will not be that much, you know, because basically it's just gravel. The hauling it and the placing it, so. We're not, it's, it's not going to be that big a price tag. We're not, it's, it's not going to be that big a price tag for us, so. We'll have to see how things turn out on that. The guys, they've been crack ceiling between putting up barricades and. Plowing snow. They had to go out the other day and do a little sanding because the roads were slick again. Like you said, uh, we're also out with our old pot trying to. Keep things from blowing out even further where we spray MC seventy and put P rock over the top of it to help glue it back together. The blade guys have been trying to get the gravel road shaped up because they were a disaster because we didn't have any blading this winter. Usually we have a week or two through the winter where it warms up so we can go out and drag it back and forth and kind of shape it up, but. We had none of that this winter. It was just, just a miserable winter all the way around. Um, we're gonna start pulling shoulders on some of the gravel roads because. In the winter time, you drive down the middle of the road, the gravel gets. Thrown to both sides of the road and you can pull some of it in, but some of it's over the edge from pollen and snow. So we gotta drag that in and shape things back up. And just a reminder to all. We're still have seven ton per axle on all of our asphalt roads and trucks are forty miles an hour and. Like I said, Troy can attest to the road that. Is getting truck traffic on it right now. They're breaking it up. And it costs us all money to fix that. So, slow down. Lighten your loads. I know it costs money to make an extra trip, but. We have to do it. We have to haul anything, so. I guess that's all I have for right now. If you got any questions?
Any questions for, how we superintendent? You got a couple of agenda items. Um. Number ten is action to approve an agreement with I M E G consultants for microcer- twenty twenty three micro servicing road project engineering services. That's.
Yes, this is to micro seal. Eight and a half miles road depending on the, the price. Um, this is all over uh on the west side of the county. It'll add on to where we finished last year. And it'll go down to two twelve. There's. But this is just the contract to get those guys started to uh. Put the plan together and then I'll come back for uh notice the bidders when that is completed and that shouldn't be too down, too far down.
Just the same company that did the mic.
No, this is a, a different company. Banner did it last year and I'm gonna have I make a decision.
Okay. Make a motion to approve that.
So a motion from Van Dusen.
Forward with it. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Schwer. Um, any other questions or discussion? So this is budgeted ice.
Yeah, this is a budgeted fact, yes.
Just like to say that.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, hearing no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. And that motion carries. And then I think you have.
The second one is notice the bidders. We'll have to wait until.
Wait for this one. Okay, so. Okay. All righty, all right.
Yeah, I have one, whatever. Yeah, this is, this is the one they gave me until you can have me decide that. Yep, because the sooner I can get that to the level, the sooner we can get going on.
All right, thanks for.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve. That's what I'm thinking.
They just want to see me ride on his chair at the end of the. We need to. I, I didn't think he had any notes and then he slides this computer over. That's worse.
That way I can edit while I'm.
A lot of word documents in that little computer.
It's a good thing there's Microsoft Office.
I know it.
I couldn't be able to work without it with all the different spots connecting to other computers. All right, we'll start out here um with the egg building. Of course, sandbag filling was staged um out at uh the extension building for the municipal utilities for bagging. Um, also out there going on, it was, there's some meetings, some auctions and some minor events taking place. Otherwise, everything seems to be on the good side out there. Um, government building. I am, we're waiting for the equipment and staging time for the sound system in the second floor courtroom. Um, receiving some, receiving some quotes for the second floor um carpet in the courtrooms in the adjacent rooms. Plus, um, I'm gonna be meeting this coming month in May um with Brent Solom. We're gonna go over a grant that for uh. Improving the camera system in here. Some of these cameras are analog, some are outdated. So I think uh Brad had mentioned something a while back to you guys about, about this. Also, now on the detention center, of course, what Brad had approached you is some porcelain sinks and toilets were broken off. I will be coming to you next week with a quote for replacing all the porcelain um uh units to stainless steel units. Park reservation so far this year as of yesterday, April twenty fourth. Are at thirty four thousand and eighteen dollars. Boat ramp out at the park has lifted Rome due to the ice. It's um, I've got. Dan Deutsch from Deutsch excavation coming out this week. They're gonna go back and reset some of them into place. Because it lifted about a foot or so up, so nobody be able to use that boat ramp at the present time. Um, so he'll be coming out, like I said, later this weekend. And getting them set. Um. Also, um, the adjuster. Last week finally got an estimate from the water damage project up there for the cleanup and reconstruction. Um, uh, he is reviewing the estimate and will get back to me, but so far, right now, it is looking at like. The cleanup and removal, twenty one thousand six hundred. And twenty three dollars and forty seven cents. And reconstruction. Fifty seven thousand three hundred and sixty nine dollars and eleven cents. Um, he had felt it was a little bit steep and so that, so he is looking over the, the coat and stuff and. And I'll be in touch with him this week to see. So.
How big a building is that, Steve?
Well, the area got damaged, probably. Thirty by forty. But all, all the ceilings, they removed all the ceilings, um, all the walls except for a corner little section by the overhead doors. Um, that had, everything had water in it. Um, and then of course, some of the appliances and everything because of the water and damage and some uh cabinetry, especially the ground. And so that is figured to get replaced. So, yeah.
It's a seventy.
It just about blew me away.
Yeah, seventy eight, eighty thousand.
Um, I'm gonna say I wish it was on fire because it would have been just a total loss and. I know, I know, but in, in some respects. It's almost a whole new building, so.
I'll need to start a plot now.
Yeah. Okay, in the weed, um, I attended uh instant command tabletop exercise with uh, there was twenty four attendees. Um, individuals from the course of South Dakota D N R, United States Department of Ag. Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service, Plant Protection and Quarantine. Um. That attended um also the um that was there is the um. South Dakota Secretary Ag attended this meeting also an event for this. It was a very good workshop. It's kind of more or less set as a tabletop like we have all. Disaster stuff like that, but it was given insights in different scenarios. What would you do in this case? Who, who instructs? So it was a very good informational meeting. Um, they do probably plan on doing sometime an actual. Um, acted out event so you can have practices on this. So it was, it was very informational. Um, also attended to South Dakota Weed Commission meeting. Um, this year there was a rules hearing to add wild parsnip to the local. Um, noxious list.
What was that, what?
Wild parsnip?
Yeah. Yeah.
We do have a little bit here in the county. We have a couple of spots. Um, biggest probably spot is twenty acres. Otherwise, there's some small little patches. You get. East down into dual county, you get the Kingsbury County. It's got actually quite a bit down there and so yeah, so. And there's quite a bit spread across the state. Um, having a weed board meeting this, this afternoon at two o'clock there, the extension complex. There I will go over, we'll go over the budget for two thousand and twenty four in that meeting. West Nile, um, on a brief, short notice, uh, I had to run up to Aberdeen last week and get the fogger calibrated. Um, they forgot to tit, send an email to me and I got called if I was coming last week and. Oh, when is it? So, uh, so I ran up. It was last week Wednesday and, and got that calibrated. And I'll end and so we add right now with that I'm working on the two thousand and twenty four budgets.
Do you foresee any big, big things coming our way?
Um, well, right now, and so I'm waiting and so we had back to find out about where we might be setting for the HVAC system here. Also out at the extension complex, I don't know if anybody's noticed, there's always been a little pile. We put some. Out in the front entry, right from the sidewalk to the, to the parking lot. It always wants to heave and lift. I've also contacted um banner engineering to come in and maybe redoing that parking lot to get better drainage. And then prevent some, some lift on that, so.
It's a trip.
Yes, it's a dangerous trip hazard.
Yeah, trip hazard for sure, yeah. If that we had somebody trip in that area and fall through the door.
Yeah, and that was, yeah, that was over. It was going into the.
Yeah, going into the.
In the sail barn.
Yeah.
But that was prior to some.
Yeah.
Um, cement and so that, that was redone a few years back, so.
Any questions for Steve? So I think you got a couple, you got a couple of agenda.
Yep.
Here that would, your presence would be helpful. Number twelve is action to approve. To advertise and hire two seasonal memorial park maintenance positions. Every motion.
So move.
So motion by Johnson's.
Second.
Second by Van Dusen. Steve, do you want to tell us?
Um, basically, and so I'm looking at for a couple of people out there right now. A couple of my staff is only gonna put in about thirty hours a week and so that and. And I'm looking at if somebody wants to do only a thirty hour, twenty hour, however, to fill, just to go and. Fill some time last year of, they usually typically always have four people. That's generally full time. So these. You know, with a couple of them want to cut back, I need to have a couple of them just to, for some basis.
So. We already got, we got a motion, we already got a motion in a second.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Will say no. That motion carries and then number uh eleven is action to approve to advertise and hire ACs no weed. I'm sorry, I'm looking at, okay, thirteen, okay, I'm looking at the one. So the one on the screen is a little older. Okay, so number thirteen, sorry, is actually to approve to advertise and hire a seasonal weed department weed sprayer position. So.
So move.
So motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Waterman, if you want to.
And basically here, I've always tried to get somebody to fill. I've always had a difficult time trying to get somebody out there, but. What I need is somebody that is because of the projects going on this year. I know can already can tell that it's just gonna be a struggle for me getting into that truck as much as. What I have been in the past and so that.
Are some of that were there last year, they?
The two that, the two that I have are, are there. Of course, we have the one full, you know, that works at the extension building over the winter. And then I have uh the other gentleman has returned and so we, yes, and so that, but yeah, I'm trust, trying to get somebody to fill in, so. We can get everything covered.
Your chair. Uh, is there certifications or requirements for that person?
They have to turn around and they can get hired, but they have to go and take tests to pass certification for um commercial applicator. When it's primarily, yeah, primarily for, you know, commercial or for general. And then they have to do the right away, number seven, so they can apply on right ways.
But that's not real easy.
Not generally very easy, no.
But it is open book.
It is open book. Um, basically, you go into the extension building and. It, it, you go into the extension buildings, and you go on online tests and so that, but.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it, but you can't cheat because you can't have your phone in there. You can't do everything. So you have to actually. They'll give you some books to follow the guide and then you answer questions online, so.
You're gonna want to check.
Is that a time test also?
Nope, no time involved, but. It's just biggest thing is, is this one here, unlike the private, this one, you have to finish your test, otherwise you have to start all over again.
So the test is kind of like, you know, um, you have to answer this question, but if you refer to paragraph four, the second sentence, wink, wink, answer might be in there?
I don't know. It's usually, it's a multiple choice.
Okay.
It's multiple choice and so that is the biggest thing. There is some calculation that you have to do on some figuring and so I do, but.
Actually, it, it's not an easy test.
I'm just making light of it, but.
Yeah.
So if people are interested, just watch. Those jobs will be posted soon.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I don't know if you approved yet. So, well, hearing no, any other discussion? Yeah, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Okay, that motion carries. So number fourteen, action to authorize the sheriff to sign a quick.
Thanks.
Indeed, thanks, Steve.
All right, so uh. A few weeks back, you approved an offer from the town of South Shore and a deed has been prepared by Burn's Law Office. So now we just need a motion for the chair to sign this quick claim deed.
Is there a motion?
I saw move.
So, motion by Schwer, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
By Van Dusen. So any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Will say no. And that motion carries. Okay, number. Uh, fifteen is action to authorize chair to sign a certification required by South Dakota Executive Order twenty twenty three zero two.
Yes, I received this, an email. Uh, we do receive funding from the state for our, in the Department of Health for our WIC and our nurse contracts. I ran this by the um state's attorney and she said, yes, this would be something. That we will need to authorize the chair to sign.
So this, yeah, if you read the first paragraph, it has to do with them, you know, this, the state not wanting to do business with um certain countries. So. Tom, you can see it on the screen there. So China, Iran, North Korea, Russia, Cuba, or Venezuela. So that's basically the, the gist of it. And so we're not, we're not a prohibitive.
Make a motion to approve.
So motion by Van Dusen, is there a second? Second by Waterman. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Will say no. Okay, that motion carries. And then number fourteen, oh, I'm sorry. Number sixteen is actually. Um, the county consolidated Board of Equalization Minutes. So we had those meetings about two weeks ago now. So these are the minutes from, from the, the uh, the meetings where people, you know, submitted their appeals or their valuations was basically was most of the meeting. So. Is there a motion to, so we need to approve those minutes as, as both our own minutes, as the county board and then also um.
So move this print.
So motion by Johnson.
I'll second this.
By Schwer. Any other, any additions, corrections? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Will say no. And that motion carries. And then. So nothing for seventeen abatement, so no abatement applications.
You have.
For eighteen. Okay, so number eighteen, action to approve claims for payments. So. We have those on here.
So move.
Someone's by Johnson, for a second.
Again.
Second by Van Dusen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Will say no. And that motion carries. So travel.
It is uh based attorneys, office uh to attend um listening to a meeting conference. In that transportation vehicle. Um, part of this, there'll be partial reimbursement on meals and a lot, so. What a estimate of what. At this point, if she's aware of, but there will be some partial reimbursement.
Where's this at? Here. Here.
Um. That is, yeah, I I. It's their annual conference for.
Should be a reason.
I I can let you know, it's just for um public safe, you know, safety reasons that we don't always put all that out there, so anyway.
I. If I may just add to that, now I understand the reasoning behind the not releasing the name so that people don't know when somebody's gonna be gone, but. I think a valid location or a destination might be okay. Um, okay, thank you. Think we can search for that on. So, yeah, sure, it's your motion. Yeah, we need a motion. I'll move. So motion by Van Dusen.
I'll second it.
Second by Schwer. Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Will say no. Get that motion carries. Number twenty-two, public notices where a possible quorum of commissioners may be. Somebody new. Commissioner Johnson getting out his calendar.
Yeah, my. Blueberry.
Anybody?
Let somebody wanna go with me to get my oil changed. They're alright.
Mr. Chair, there is a nine-one-one board meeting on Thursday. Okay, I think you plan on attending that. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
You have to give it anybody for that, so. Anything else? Nope. Okay, number twenty-three, any old business? Twenty-four, any new business?
I I back up to old business. Um. I guess it's all business. Uh, last Tuesday after transmission meeting, I know. There was a couple of us there. Lee was there. We attended that uh.
Oh, yeah.
Ten connects.
Yeah.
Um, there was a. Uh, event put on by, well, I don't split on by, but Sarah was very involved in it and welfare office and that. My observation was it went very well and they had very, very good attendance. There were a lot of people there and um. And I guess it just uh. Uh, uh, from my observation, this is something that I've seen, hoped to see happen a long, long time ago where. All of these, you know, there's twenty-four vendors there and they said there's probably. Ten or twelve that worked there, all these entities that provide services. And sometimes the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing, and they finally can, they're starting to get together. And share with each other what these services are provided by each of these organizations and and um. I, this is one way to, I don't know how far along it's come, but it has, you gotta start anyway. And you gotta start somewhere, but uh it was very well attended and I talked to several of the people that were there and they were excited about uh. Uh, one of the exercises that they were doing and I got involved in the tail end of it, they. They had a an act, it was, it's interesting. They give. A group of people got into small groups and then they give them so much money and they had to. Uh, show what people that.
Poverty simulation.
Poverty, how they're gonna pay the electric bill, how they're gonna pay the utilities and so on and so forth, you know, and they had to come up with all these. Different things and, you know. I think most of us are so blessed that we never have to deal with those kinds of things and. When you sit in a situation like this, you think, Jesus, people have to go through this every month. Or maybe every week or maybe every day, you know? But it was, it seemed like a good, good event and it had very, very good uh attendance. So that.
Yeah, thanks for uh bringing that up, cause I I just um. Cause yeah, we should toot the horn that, so our welfare office and Sarah Fowes have been the kind of the coordinator of all the effort and, you know, it's still, it's still a work in progress, but. You know, the idea is to get all the different agencies, basically in the social services world, to be hitting on all cylinders, you know? Handing off, you know, so they're helping people working um together, so you know, somebody in need doesn't fall through the cracks between. Agencies or between organizations. Um, one thing I should mention, if people wanna check out um. What, you know, just the different information available at the different services, organizations, Cottington connects, if you search for that, that's, that'll get you to. A new website that's been set up to just to help. Make, you know, so that information is out there, so that people can connect to stuff. Um, I don't know. You, Matt, or you wanna say anything? You've been involved with some of the efforts within there too.
Right, so this is all part of our strategic planning that's been going on for a couple of years and it's finally come together to this and yeah, that new website. Is very informational for. All age groups. It has activities for teens and and youth and it it will be very interactive and they'll be updated all the time and it's just a good resource. For individuals if they wanna find any information out and this will continue. Um. Yeah, it's a start and it's very encouraging to get all these entities to finally work together, so very good.
So the part of it is, you know, public awareness, so that's what the website's about. So that's kind of a big deal. And so if you get, if you search for cutting to connects, you'll, you'll find it and uh. And it's not just if you're in need, you might, some of it's just useful information, so.
Hats off to Sarah and her staff. We're doing a lot of work, putting all this stuff together.
Thanks for mentioning that. Um, okay, any new business, number twenty-four? Open, number twenty-five, the open. Any public comments?
I uh, I do have, and I.
So you have a commissioner comment. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, my one ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, just fine.
You know, you're one behind. Mission comment, they uh, if you've listened to the news and all lately, the summer studies, there's two summer studies, one is on. Uh, long-term uh living and and the other one is on uh county government and. And I had a chance to live with some of the legislators here in the past couple of weeks, but. You know, and and they are kind of right, you know, we've always gone to legislator and just asked for more money. And a lot of legislators don't understand how we spend our money, so I I approached Brenda this morning and asked her if she could. Put something together. I think the information is there, it's just a matter, right, take the time to put it together. How much of our total budget is spent where? You know, how much do we spend on? Safety, how much we spend on roads and bridges, you know? Uh, where's our money going on? You know, we always complain about. Uh, court-appointed attorneys. Well, here's a chance where we could tell the legislators, this is this pile of money that just keeps growing and growing and growing, you know? And we don't have any control over it. And then I think what the legislators need to understand. I know one of the commissioners from Brookings County made the comment. You know. They said they didn't want any mandated uh. Numbers, but ninety percent of our total budget, I mean, I'm just using this number, I'm just grabbing it from nowhere. Ninety percent is probably mandated. Expenses that we have. And Brendan's gonna see if he could kind of narrow that down as to find out. It's, it's amazing, you know, you take our multimillion dollar budget, but most of it is mandated. Where state tells us where we have to spend our money. And they need to know that. The legislators need to know that. So that was the only thing I just had.
Yeah. I wanted to add. Governor Noem was on the radio the other day talking about that, how happy she was to see that the summer study was finally gonna be dealing with county. Uh, county expenditures and, you know, I agree with you, Commissioner Johnson, that a lot of the public has no idea what counties are mandated to. To pay, you know, just in corrections and judicial costs and. And everything that's associated with that. Cause I mean, just so people know what we're talking about, so these um. There, there's been a topic in our, for the executive session among the county commissioners association, so I'm the Sioux Valley rep for that, but the um. It kind of looked, twenty fifteen, they did a some similar legislative study where you just kind of go down and say, okay, what, what does the law say that that counties have to do and the the biggies are roads? And public safety, you know, those are, and and supporting the criminal justice system, you know, there's counties have a role in that, so. Um, and all those bread and butter, those are bread and butter issues for counties, and so it's, it's worth doing. Um, it'll be interesting to see how it differs from the twenty fifteen study, so and it's good that the, you know, the governor um is looking forward to the results of that. The other thing that's gonna probably impact counties is um a, there's a a working group. Uh, run by the U J S specifically dealing with court-appointed attorneys. So the question is, you know, how much should, should counties? I think the question is, should the counties be covering court-appointed attorneys, a portion thereof, none of it, should the state help, you know, all that, so they're kind of looking at that. And um, you're trying to look at it from, I guess. A philosophical, you know, reasoning perspective, but also a fiscal perspective as well, so. If, if I may ask, who's the, who's chair in that summer study?
Roger Chase, he's a former student of mine, so I've gotta feel it in with him, so.
You passed him.
You mentioned that ninety percent is mandated by the state. They just did a study down in Sioux Falls, Neha County. It's ninety-one percent with nine percent discretionary.
That's a pretty good. Estimate wasn't? Ninety percent. Yeah, Roger is a former student of mine and uh. And he also, this past legislative session was Hugh Bottles roommate. And so we got some pretty good insight to to getting our voice heard in this summer study, so. Let's, let's not uh, let's use it.
Don't be shy, reach out to him. To testify, opportunities to testify.
But I can understand, like, like even Hugh said, you know, all we've ever heard from the county is we need more money, we need more money. Well, they need to find out how we're spending it.
Right.
And that's reasonable.
Well, we need more money because of mandate, when you got ninety-one percent mandated by the state.
Yeah.
It's the state telling us to charge more.
Which we don't wanna do. So, anyway. Anything else for uh? Commissioner comments?
Real estate taxes are due, people. Be sure to get that in the news and in the paper. Oh.
Yeah, mine under, yeah. Alright, yeah, don't wanna forget that. So, anything else? Do we have need for executive session? Okay.
Move to dirt.
So a motion by Johnson's, second by Waterman, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say no.